Pick it up, gonna be live streaming. No, I'm just saying you're bad at recognizing.
Yeah, I see that.
All right.
It's the attempt.
All right.
That's right.
Okay, all right, good, good, okay. All right, don't be scared.
Yeah, right there. With the light. Right here in the third room, fourth room, I'm sorry. Yeah.
All right, we ready to bring? We may bring the Caddo Parish Commission meeting to order. This is November fifteenth, it's three thirty-three. Mr. Clerk, oh, I should say that Commissioner President Lyndon Johnson was un- unavoidably retain- what's the word? Unavoidably restrained or?
He's missing.
He's missing. Now, he couldn't make it today, so I'm facilitating in his place.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Did Chairman Johnson give you the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir, he did.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll call?
Absolutely. Commissioner Hopkins, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Young.
Presidents.
Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Talafaro.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here, sir.
Commissioner Lazarus.
Here.
And Commissioner Epperson.
Present.
Okay, you have seven of eleven Commissioners present. That does constitute a quorum.
Okay, thank you. And could we please ask Minister Joyce Rogers to provide the invocation, followed by, and then afterwards, maybe we would have Commander David Williams with Post 450 do the Pledge of Allegiance and the POW Resolution. But first, Minister Joyce Rogers, please lead us in the pledge. Stand everyone, please.
I plead the invocation.
So, I say the pledge. invocation, please.
Good afternoon, and let us bow for a word of prayer. Oh God, our heavenly Father, you have blessed us with brave men and women who are willing to defend our freedom. May your protection and grace surround them each day. Let your healing, your healing hand be upon those who suffer wounds and injuries. May those who have made the ultimate sacrifice rest forever in your holy presence. Comfort the families who mourn and those who are left to remember the precious lives of their loved ones. Help us to honor and support them. Let us ever be mindful of each sacrifice made on behalf of the American people by our sons, our daughters, our husbands, wives, mothers, fathers, and our friends. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Minister Rogers. And do we have David Williams?
Would you join me in unison in the Pledge of Allegiance? You authorized service members are authorized to hand salute. All others place your right hand over your heart in unison. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the POW MIA salute.
A POW MIA empty chair is placed at all official meetings of the American Legion and other veteran service organization as a physical symbol of the thousands of American POWs MIA still unaccounted for from all the wars and conflicts involving the United States of America. This is a reminder for all of us to spare no effort to secure the release of any American prisoner from captivity, the repatriation of remains of those who died bravely in defense of liberty, and in full accounting of those missing. Let us rededicate ourselves to this vital endeavor.
You may be seated.
Thank you, Commander Williams, for that powerful announcement, and thank you, Commissioner Epperson, for facilitating with all of that. See, Mr. Clerk, do we have any agenda additions?
I'm not aware of any agenda additions today unless you have any.
No agenda additions?
No.
Commissioner Atkins, it's my understanding that you all are going to need to adopt at some point some procedures on filling a vacancy. Do you, does anybody want to add that if you all do that unanimously, you can go ahead and specify what those will be on Thursday?
We could specify who those would be on Thursday?
Specify what the procedures will be and what your deadline would be for accepting application.
Okay. We have, well, we have a motion from Mr. Parlanterian and a second from the, Mr. Epperson, Commissioner Epperson. Would you like to verbalize that motion more specifically?
To facilitate the policies and procedures for filling the vacancy on the Caddo Parish Commission, the dates and times and procedures.
Okay. All right, so is that a, any comment on that?
We just, we have to vote on expanding the agenda to add it, and then vote on that, and then we'll vote on the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. The procedure would be you would need to open a public hearing to make sure if anybody has any comments for or against expanding the agenda to include that, then you take a vote on the expansion of the agenda.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to expand the agenda to add Commissioner Burrell's agenda item.
As recited by Commissioner Epperson. Okay, let's, all right, let's open the, is there anyone here to speak in favor of adding the agenda item? Anyone here to speak against it? Hearing none, shall we vote on the agenda item? On adding the agenda item? Mr. Clerk, all right, here we go.
All right, and that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition, and five absent.
So, in that case, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, I'm sorry, and that brings us to citizens' comments. Where citizens who wish to express to the Commission any issue other than zoning are asked to fill out a comment card located in the lobby, and they're able to also have the opportunity to fill those out before the meeting online, and return them to the President or the Clerk of the Commission. Individual comments are limited to three minutes, and I believe I have submitted three that we received. I did receive two of the commenters submitted online comments but are here in person, so we will forward the online submissions after the meeting and allow them to speak as they're here in person. We did receive a fourth comment card, but the person has not arrived yet and has asked us to hold that until they arrive.
Okay, so before we, before we start with citizens' comments, I see Ms. Frazier's on the board, is that an old, is that an old list?
That was where we just spoke about this.
So, we good with that?
Yes.
All right, so we will move into citizens' comments. We have Ms. Linda Shimwell. Ms. Shimwell, are you here? There she is.
Okay.
Ms. Shimwell, you'll have three minutes, and could we ask you to take your mask off so we can understand you more clearly, please?
Fully vaccinated, I have my, have everything.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here to comment on the possible pit bull spay neuter law ordinance. I started a no-kill shelter called Pet Savers in 2005, hoping to rescue a few animals in my retirement for no pay. It soon became clear that there is a bottomless pit of homeless pets in our area, and there's absolutely no rescue or no shelter that could possibly handle them all. We turn down at least ten dogs and cats a day, and we don't even take pits because it's so hard to find good homes for them. They would be with us until they died. And we don't just take cute, small animals or purebred dogs. If you're unlucky enough to be born a pit in the architects, you can count on either a very short life or an unhappy life in most cases. I'm sure there are a few exceptions. You either roam the streets or you're chained up. I'd like to introduce you to a dog I met almost ten years ago on Lake Shore Drive. I have one other passion in my life besides pets, and that's sailing. So, when I go to Cross Lake, I have to pass this poor dog and her friend every time I go out there. Pretty White and Tutu live at twenty-six, twenty-three oh six Lake Shore Drive. They're always chained up on a chain about this thick, and they would have no cover except I finally talked the man who owns them into letting me bring him a couple of igloo doghouses from Pet Savers. Yesterday I passed by, and they were still there chained up. They're out there in the harsh conditions, in the heat, in the cold. I've called Animal Control for help, and they've been out, but they're still there, and they're still suffering. Believe me when I tell you, this is just one small example of the pit bull ownership that I know about. Yesterday, I put a post on our Facebook page about the meeting today, and as of this morning, there had been over twelve thousand people who had seen it. Sadly, most of them, or many of them, made comments such as, well, I won't support a pit bull spay neuter ordinance until.
Move to extend for three minutes.
Second.
He offered to extend you for three minutes.
Is my three minutes up already?
We had a second, is that by acclamation?
Okay, I thought I was gonna have more. Anyway, most people who answered said they wouldn't support it until we had a spay neuter ordinance for all dogs, which I think is sad, because I think this is a wonderful start, and I really applaud Commissioner Young for presenting it. Anyway, we'd be the first southern city to have such a thing, I believe. I got some statistics from Commissioner Young today, and I understand that one-third of the dogs taken into Caddo Animal Services are pits. Fifty-five percent of the dogs euthanized are pits, and eighty-five percent of the dogs that are there at any one time are, are pits. I don't know if y'all remember that a couple of years ago, there was a woman who was killed by her own pet, a pit. We don't hear about labs killing their owners or poodles killing their owners, but unfortunately, pits have that reputation, and they roam the streets, and we, I don't want anything bad to happen to any of them, I just don't want so many of them to be born and not cared for.
Thank you, Ms. Shimwell.
This is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see here, we also have Ms. Megan Everett. You can pull that down.
Okay.
You have three minutes, Ms. Everett.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I would like to first and foremost thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of this ordinance proposal, and would like to express my support of something like this. In my time as an employee at CPAS as the rescue coordinator, I've built relationships with many rescue groups. While we are able to help a small amount of pity-type dogs in comparison to the amount coming in, most rescues cannot support the volume of pities that the shelter, that enter the shelters across the United States. I'm with Parish Paws. We take in really any dog, and we really do our best to take in the pity types because of the lives they do lead here. And it is getting harder for us to move them to our northern rescues and to our eastern rescues because there are so many of them. During my time at Caddo, I did participate in humane euthanasia. I can account for the emotional stress and toll it takes on a person euthanizing for reasons other than extreme aggression or quality of life. Running to animal rescue takes me out of that part of it, but it does take a toll emotionally when you cannot find a place for an animal that you have met, socialized with, and know would make a good companion. To some people, they see them and understand, sorry, to some people, they may see the numbers of animals or the pictures of animals, but we're actually hands-on with them and understand the characteristics and chances of them finding forever homes, whether it be adopted at Caddo or adopted once placed with a rescue. I do understand there are concerns with pediatric spay and neuter. I have been in vet medicine since 2009. I started out as a veterinary receptionist and then moved into veterinary technician. I have assisted in many elected euthanasias, whereas the animal has no quality of life, it is something that the veterinarian does recommend. I also participated in many unelected euthanasias at the shelter. To go to a kennel and pull a dog out of there that is wagging its tail, walking with you, to take it to the room, and to hold it and to tell it that it wasn't their fault while they pass away, and possibly lick you the entire time, that's not fair. There's a huge difference in what comes into the veterinarian offices. They come in for care, and they come in for, to be seen for their heartworm prevention. When they come to the shelter, they're not wanted. They come in as a stray, or they come in as a.
Move to extend for three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Second. Acclamation?
Yes.
Okay, continue on, please, Ms. Everett.
They come in unwanted, and then they sit at the shelter and hope for the chance to leave, and they, they just don't, no matter how many times we as rescues are out here fighting for them. We can't save them all, and it's a hard truth to face. I think having this ordinance would assist in the efforts of the animal community for preventing more unwanted litters that could end up at Caddo and assist in the overall health of the animal community. I will continue to support this legislation as it moves forward. Thank you for your time today, and thank you, Commissioner John Paul Young, for even attempting to enact this. It's more than appreciated. I also know that the AVMA does not support mandatory spay and neuter, but they have adopted spay and neuter policies relating to population control and age of the animal. I can, would be more than willing to forward these articles to either one of you, Commissioner Chavez or Commissioner Young. There are also general entries on spay neuter programs from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians.
Thank you, Ms. Everett.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lorraine Guerrero. Thank you for coming down, Ms. Guerrero, you have three minutes.
Excuse me?
Thank you for coming down, you have three minutes.
Okay. My name's Lorraine Guerrero. I'm the president of an organization called Nova's Heart. We help to feed, vet, give vaccinations, spay neuter, most anything that the pets of the homeless, low-income veterans, or disabled need. All of this is at no cost to them. We also have a once-a-month rabies clinic where our veterinarian comes up to our office at Hope House and gives rabies vaccinations on his dime for free. Almost eighty percent of the animals that we see in our program, and we've been doing this for over seven years, are pit bulls. Less than ten percent of those ever agree to be spay neutered. They, well, actually, I got an excuse last week from a man that I was trying to educate about the importance of spay neutering and the overpopulation in our area. He said, I just don't do that, whatever that means. Responsible pet ownership is lacking in our area. We need to educate people on the advantage of spay neutering. We also need to educate people on how our Caddo Parish Animal Control, Bossier Animal Control, our local animal controls are overrun with pit mix type animals. Now, I'm a pit lover. Pit bull technically is not a breed, it's a mix of other breeds. I have three in my home that sleep in the bed with me every night. They are not chained outside, yeah, they're big dogs, but they're all in my house. We need to tell people that it's not right to chain a dog in your front yard like a yard ornament. Dogs are companions. They're not protection, they're companions. Unless it's a trained service dog for protection or a police dog, it's not for your protection, it's companion. And owning an animal is not a right, it's a responsibility, and we have to teach people how to be responsible pet owners when they don't know. So, I just, I hope that we can get somewhere with this ordinance to alleviate the problems we have in our local animal shelters. Transports from here go up north every single week to take animals that are unwanted here up north because they have.
Move to extend for three minutes.
By acclamation? Continue on, Ms. Guerrero.
They have mandatory spay neuter laws all over this country. They don't have an influx of animals like we have in our area, and it's unfair to an animal who didn't ask to be here but who has bred over and over and over again to be euthanized because people don't know any better. We have to have education. We see seven to ten pit mix litters come into our organization every single year for vaccinations. And maybe somebody should, would say, you shouldn't vaccinate them, just don't, don't give them that service. I'm not gonna let an animal not be vaccinated and get sick and die from parvo or distemper. If I can do that, I'm gonna help out. And just in closing, none of us get paid for doing what we do. We're all volunteers because we care about our community, and we want to see our community progress and move forward and not be known as the dumping ground for pit bulls, pit bull mixes, or any other animal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. All right. That brings us to visitors. On our list of visitors, we have a presentation of the Veterans Week Recognition Ceremony Awards. Commissioner Epperson is gonna help us out with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, would I ask Mr. Vernon Williams to come up? He will facilitate our presentation. Mr. Vernon Williams is the director of the Shreveport Vet Center, located on Shreveport-Boshtier Highway, providing a plethora of services to our military and our veterans. Our first honoree will be Major Courtney Fitzgerald, United States Air Force. Okay, Mr. Williams, if you would, bring, face Courtney toward dice. Everyone face the dice. We'll take the pictures after the presentations, okay? Courtney, would you face the dice? Everyone face the dice, we'll take photos after the presentation. Courtney in the middle. Come up to the dice, come close, come close to the fire, it won't burn you. Major Fitzgerald is a licensed clinical social worker. She holds a BS in social work from Avila University with a mind in sociology, and a MSW from the University of Kansas. a MSW from the University of Kansas. She is currently pursuing her doctorate from the University of Pennsylvania. She worked for the United States Marine Corps as an Education Service Officer following graduate school. Ms. Fitzgerald was commissioned into the United States Air Force. Throughout her active duty service, she has worked and managed domestic violence and prevention programs, substance abuse prevention treatment, inpatient outpatient mental health services, behavioral health and primary care, women's health, education and training, suicide prevention, disaster mental health, and as a behavioral health consultant. She transitioned out of the service in 2016. Following a short break, decided to continue her service work for the Department of Veterans Affairs. She started at the Vet Center and provided counseling and outreach services to the veterans and their families. She later transitioned to primary care of mental health and continued to provide therapeutic services to veterans. Currently, Ms. Fitzgerald is the Women's Veterans Program Manager and works to ensure women's veterans receive the best care possible throughout the VA. Her area specialties are PTSD, women's health, program management, and integrative behavioral health and primary care. Providing service to others has always been important to Ms. Fitzgerald. From the time she was a spouse of a United States Marine and became a key spouse to assist other dependents and families during deployments in times of unit difficulty. Ms. Fitzgerald continues to volunteer with her local church and scouts. In addition to volunteering, Ms. Fitzgerald's interests are reading, watching films, cooking, learning about other cultures, spending time with family, friends, and traveling. Ms. Fitzgerald also enjoys spending time with her two children and her spouse. The accolades that she received in the United States Air Force are the Meritorious Service Medal, Air Force Commendation Medal with one oak leaf cluster, Joint Meritorious Unit Award, Air Force Outstanding Unit Award with five oak leaf clusters, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Nuclear Deterrence Operations Service Medal, Air Force Overseas Ribbon, Ribbon Longevity Medal with one oak leaf cluster. She's also completed all of her Air Force training. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you Major Courtney Fitzgerald. At this time, if I could, could I ask everyone to hold their applause until we acknowledge all of our recipients, okay? Courtney, if you would like a word, and then after you, the Director of Overton Brooks VA Medical Center, Mr. Richard Crockett.
Thank you for, to the committee, I appreciate this. This is such a great honor. There are so many wonderful veterans that we serve in our area. Thank you, Mr. Crockett, for being here. Shannon Arledge, Mr. Williams, my family, and just being part of a wonderful community that takes time to recognize all veterans. Thank you.
I've been doing this for about thirty years. Not a veteran myself, but privileged to be downstream for veterans for a long time. And I've had the opportunity and privilege of meeting Congressional Honor recipients, of course, Purple Heart recipients, Bronze Medal, and everything in between. It's fantastic. And there is one thing that they all have in common, absolutely one thing. When I talk to them, in awe, do you know what they tell me? "I was just doing my job." Courtney represents the best of us. If you were to talk to her, I guarantee that she says, "I was just doing my job." But the thing with people like her, I've found, is they're the quiet ones. And in their wake, they just get things done. And I would invite you, if you want to see a physical representation of that, if you go to the Veterans Affairs Hospital and you go up, you'll see a brand-new shiny building full of glass and light and just wonderful. Building fifty-five, but you would know it as our Women's Clinic Building. And Courtney is one of the key players to get that done. She is amazing and she represents the best of us. And I thank each of you for recognizing one of our best. Thank you.
Thank you, Scotty Crockett.
Okay, our second honoree would be Staff Sergeant Lawrence Gidry, United States Air Mr. Gidry's MOS, while he was in the military, he was the Administrative Supervisor to the Department Commanders of Operations and Operations Headquarters, the Strategic Air Command off at Air Force Base in Nebraska. He was also the supervi, Administrative Supervisor at Boshtail Air Force Base, the sixty-second Bomb Squad that handled the B-52 bombers coming in. He also held a top-secret clearance. Mr. Gidry's education was Tennessee State University, a Bachelor of Science in Sociology. The kind of medals that Mr. Gidry received was the National Defense Service Medal, the Air Force Longevity Service Award, the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Air Force Good Conduct Medal with one bronze oak leaf cluster, and the Vietnam Service Medal. At this time, Mr. Gidry is currently serving as the President and CEO of Caddo Community Action Agency, which has been doing a wonderful, wonderful job on behalf of the citizens of Caddo Parish for a number of years, directing the Head Start Program and other social programs for the citizens of Caddo Parish. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Lawrence Gidry. You can turn up to Mr. Gidry if you have a comment.
I want to thank you for the honor. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my service in the military. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next recipient would be Ralph Davis Henderson, Specialist Five-E-Five. Mr. Henderson comes to us from Magnolia High School in Pioneer, Louisiana. He's a retiree of General Motors. He spent about twenty years with General Motors out in California, subsequently moved to Shreveport and spent another ten years where he retired at the Shreveport General Motors Plant. He's a member of the New Bethel Number Two Baptist Church in Benton, Louisiana, where he serves on the Deacon Board. Mr. Henderson's awards are National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal with four Bronze Service Stars, Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, Combat Infantry Badge, Marksman Rifle M-16, Expert Rifle M-14. Mr. Henderson was a ground pounder, as we call him. He was in the Mechanized Infantry Division while in Vietnam. He also had a statement that said, "As a recipient of the United States Draft, I served my country at the age of nineteen, with my future ahead of me. I could have done like so many others, but stood with my comrades, gave my commitment to protect and serve. I was terrified and never thought I would go, but took the training I was given, and today I look back and see the Lord and the prayers of my family and friends brought me through." Mr. Ralph D. Henderson.
I thank you to the panel. First giving honor to God, my Savior Jesus Christ. I would say the Lord has His way and I am honored to be here, to be honored, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, if you, if you'd like to turn around and face the audience in case someone's going to take a photo with you, holding your plaque up. Turn around and face the audience. Thank you. Our next honoree would be Lieutenant Colonel Retired Tedris T. Smith, United States Army. A dedicated Army Lieutenant with over twenty years of service, committed to serving young people and making a difference in the lives of the community. Serves as Lieutenant on, currently serving as a Lieutenant on Shreveport Police Department, a true servant to humanity. Lieutenant Colonel Retired Tedris T. Smith graduated from Northwestern State University in nineteen eighty-eight with a Bachelor of Science degree. Lieutenant Colonel Smith was commissioned in the Ordinance Branch through the Army ROTC Program. His military education includes Ordinance Basic and Advanced Courses, Advanced Military Police Orientation Course, Public Affairs Officers' Advanced Course, Psychological Operations Officer Course, the Command and General Staff College, and the United States Army War College Defense Strategy Course. He participated in numerous mobilizations due to the Presidential Call to Active Duty, including Operation Desert Shield, Desert Storm, as an Assistant Training Officer at Fort Polk, Louisiana, Operation Joint Guard as a Liaison Officer at Bosnia-Herzegovina, Operation Enduring Freedom as a Public Affairs Officer at Fort Polk, Louisiana, Operation Enduring Freedom as the Garrison Installation Provost Marshal at Fort Polk, Louisiana. As an Army Reserve Soldier, Lieutenant Colonel Smith was the Headquarters and Headquarters Command Commander of the Forty-Thirteen Garrison Support Unit, Bossier City, Louisiana, and the Garrison Installation Provost Marshal at Fort Polk, Louisiana. Lieutenant Colonel Retired Tedris T. Smith retired with thirty years of military service. Lieutenant Colonel Smith's awards and decorations include Meritorious Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal with four bronze oak leaf clusters, Army Reserve Components' Achievement Medal with three bronze oak leaf clusters, National Defense Service Medal, Armed Forces Expend, Expenduary Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism Medal, Armed Forces' Reserve Medal with two M devices and bronze hourglass devices, Army Service Ribbon, Army Reserve Components Overseas Training Ribbon, North Atlantic Treaty Organization Medal, NATO, and the Parachute Dispatch. As a citizen soldier, Lieutenant Colonel Smith is employed as a law enforcement officer with the Shreveport Police Department, Shreveport, Louisiana, where he serves as a lieutenant in the position as Executive Officer for Area Three. Lieutenant Colonel Smith and his wife have two sons. Ladies and gentlemen, Lieutenant Colonel Tedris T. Smith retired in nineteen ninety-eight.
I just want to say, thank you for this award. It just happened, I just happen to have my name on the plaque. I just want to say thank you to all the men and women that I served with. For example, Master Sergeant Williams, who I really look up to and admired me and kept me out of a lot of trouble as a Second Lieutenant, probably keep me from going to Fort Leavenworth, Fort Leavenworth, rather. I just want to say thank you. And also, I wanted to say to a good First Sergeant that I had, that his name is on the wall, he didn't come back. He's Master Sergeant, actually Sergeant Major Bornhill. Sir, thank you so much for all the things that you've done and kept me out of trouble top. Thank you so much.
Colonel Smith, would you tell the audience also where your son is?
Yes, yeah, I thought I wasn't going to be able to make it back. My son is playing football for the United States Military Carrier West Point.
Our next honoree, previously Captain Thompson, now recently promoted to Major Thompson. And his parents are here, Justin Thompson, Major Justin Thompson, Mr. James Thompson, United States Army Veteran, Vietnam, and his mother, Ms. Earlene Thompson. Major Thompson is in Fort Leavenworth at Command College School, so he could not be here, so they will be, will give the award in his, in his stead. Major Thompson is the son of Vietnam Veterans Sergeant James A. Thompson and Earlene R. Thompson. He's a native of Shreveport, Louisiana, Keyville, Louisiana, a graduate of Southwood High School, which breath of fresh air to see a man of this caliber coming from there. And I'm sure that there's many more positive things that's coming from Southwood that you don't hear about. Upon earning a bachelor's degree from Northwestern State University, Major Thompson commissioned in the United States Army ROTC Program in 2010. Following his commission, he attended the Quartermaster Basic Officers' Leadership Course in October of 2011. Major Thompson holds a Bachelor of Arts in Criminal Justice, a Master of Arts in Education, a Master of Science in Homeland Security, and a Doctorate of Philosophy in Homeland Security. Major Thompson's military education includes Support Operations Courses, Phases One and Two, Sling Load Inspection Certification Course, Airborne Training Course, Air Assault Course, Pathfinder's Course, Area Delivery Materials Officer Course, SHARP Certification Course, Quartermaster Officers' Basic Course, and the Combined Logistics Captain Career Course. Major Thompson currently serves as an Observer Coach at the Joint Readiness Training Center at Fort Polk, Louisiana. Major Thompson's previous assignments include Supply Support Activity, Platoon Leader of A Company Ninety-fourth Brigade Support Battalion, Maintenance Control Officer and Executive Officer Delta Force Support Company and Brigade Support Battalion S-4 at Fort Polk. He also served as the Hundred and Eighty-Eight Brigade Support Battalion Deputy Special Police Office and Company Commander of the Headquarters Service Company. His next assignment, which he is in now, he's attended the Command and General Staff College at Fort Leavenworth, Kansas, and as I stated, he was recently promoted to Major. And I ask Mr. and Ms. Thompson if he would let us, if he would do his penning ceremony at the commission upon his return back to Shreveport in December. Captain, Major Thompson's awards include the Meritorious Service Medal, Army Commendation Medal, Army Achievement Medal with Oak Cluster, National Defense Service Medal, Afghanistan Campaign Medal with two campaign stars, Global War on Terrorism Service Medal, Humanitarian Service Medal, NATO, and Airborne Parachute Dispatch. Ladies and gentlemen, Major Justin Thompson, United States Army, and accepting his father, Mr. James, and his mother, Earlene. Well, James and Ms. Thompson, y'all have for coming.
Well, to the commissioner, on behalf of my son, we'd just like to say thank you. He came from a family of military, his father, both of his grandfathers, aunts and aunts, so we came from a family of military. But he wanted you all to know, it's an honor to serve and thanks for considering him for this award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next recipient would be First Lieutenant Schelfert E. Wilson, United States Army. First Lieutenant Schelfert E. Wilson received his education, a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering at Southern University, a Master of Science in Acoustical Engineering from the University of Houston. He also, upon completion of his military service, retired after thirty-two years with the AT&amp;T System, which some of you may know started out as Western Electric, then Lucent, and Avaya, whatever it was down there on Massfield Road. He was commissioned as Second Lieutenant in January of nineteen sixty-six. Lieutenant Wilson received officers' training at Fort Belvoir, Virginia, as a Second Lieutenant. He began his Vietnam tour in September of nineteen sixty-eight, nineteen sixty-six with the One Hundred and Sixty-Eight Combat Engineering Battalion. He distinguished himself during Operation Cedar Falls by commanding a platoon whose accomplishments far exceeded a unit for that size. First Lieutenant Wilson received the Bronze Star Medal for his performance during this operation and for his exemplary service during this tour. The award read, "Meritorious Achievement in Ground Operations Against Hostile Forces." Part of his platoon's mission during this, this operation was clearing road mines, destroying and disarming booby traps, clearing cover that could be used for ambushes. Wilson, when holding the rank of First Lieutenant, returned from Vietnam in September of nineteen sixty-seven and spent the last six months of active duty training troops for Vietnam duty. Since then, he has served the community through organizations that include the Alliance of Lucent Employees Regional Direction, Director, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Financial Secretary and Treasurer, Multicultural Development Center, and Image Changes Inc. as Vice President. He is still active in some of these organizations. One of his major products include the Martin Luther King Area, which included a community park and five homes, five homes constructed under Hurd's First Time Home Bios Program. First Lieutenant Wilson's military achievements were the Army Commendation Medal, Vietnam Service Medal, the National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Commendation Medal, and the Bronze Star for his exemplary service. Ladies and gentlemen, First Lieutenant Schelfert E. Wilson.
I have a very short story, but it's true. About six or seven years ago, a friend came over and had a little bag in his hand. So I said, "What do you have there?"
Mr. Wilson, you can take your mask off while you speak. Come a little closer to the mic, please.
I said, "About six or seven years ago, a friend of mine came over and he had a little bag in his hand." So I asked him, "What you got there?" And when he opened it up, it was a Vietnam Service cap. Well, I wasn't in the habit of wearing caps of any kind, so the next day, I thought I'd wear it since it was a gift. And I was in Walmart and a lady stopped and said, "Thank you for your service." Now, I have greeted veterans like- Now, I have greeted veterans like that over the years, many times, and I've heard others do the same. But this time, it was said to me, and I felt great, I really did. Ever since that time, most of the time when I go out, I will be wearing that now one of many military service caps. So it's not just the annual day, it's the little things during the year as well. To thank you for your service, dedicated parking spots, the little discounts here and there, even if it's a free soft drink, it served to show that we, our contributions are not forgotten. So, thank you so much for this. I'll cherish it all.
Your granddaughter got a good picture? At this time, we're going to go for our, our biggie, and that's the, that's the, uh, Colonel Stephen Depesler Award. For those of you that may not know Colonel Depesler, and if you don't, I don't know how you hadn't heard of him. Uh, he's the only person to have a building name, only living person to have a building named after him on any military installation within the history of the United States. Also, during his military career, Colonel Depesler, he had every enlisted rank in the United States Army from E-One all the way up to Master Sergeant, then the, the warrant officers, C-One, C-Two, C-Four, and then the Commissioners' Office rank in the Air Force, Second Lieutenant to Full Bird Colonel. This man was tireless. He worked until, I think he passed at the age of a hundred and three. He went to work every day at the retirees' office at Barksdale Air Force Base. Anything to do with veterans and military that was accomplished within this area, Colonel Depesler and others had a hand on it. Regrettably, he passed, I think it was in twenty nineteen. And before he passed, he did give us permission because we all worked together for over twenty-five years together and, uh, on various issues of military to, uh, to give in honor in his name each year. And he did have an opportunity to see the first honor, which was given to Mayor Lo Walker in his name. So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, our twenty twenty-one Stephen Colonel D. Depesler Award will go to Mr. Ri- Sergeant Relis P. Gottfried, United States Army. Relis P. Gottfried, Sergeant, United States Army, was born and raised in Shreveport, Louisiana, graduated from Byrd High School in nineteen sixty-two. He attended Centenary College where he received his Bachelor of Arts degree in nineteen sixty-six, received his Master of Arts from the University of Oklahoma in nineteen sixty-eight. He later attended Louisiana State University Law School, receiving his Juris Doctorate in nineteen seventy-four. Since his graduation, he has been a practicing attorney specializing in estate planning and succession administration until twenty twelve. Relis attended basic training at Fort Polk in January of nineteen sixty-nine. He completed the United States Army Intelligence School in area and, in area intelligence, and was later assigned to the Five Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Military Intelligence Group, Republic of Vietnam in January of nineteen seventy. His area of operation was King Jane Province, Fourth Corps, in the Mekong Delta Region, where he was documented as a GS-Nine civilian. He conducted intelligence operations and was the counterpart to a Vietnamese major in intelligence matters. He also worked with the United States Navy SEALs, the River Patrol Force, Brown Water Navy. He received an early separation from the military in June of nineteen seventy-one, so as he may attend law school. His military decorations include the Bronze Star, the Purple Heart, Republic of Vietnam Service Medal, Republic of Vietnam Campaign Medal, and the National Defense Service Medal. Relis has been and continues to be involved in the local community with veterans organizations. He is a member of the American Legion, uh, Low McFarland Post Fourteen and Chapter Three-Fifty-One of the Military Order of the Purple Heart. He serves both organizations as judge advocate. Relis was invited to join the Forty and Eight Club, an honor organization also known as the Forty and Eight Club, and served as advocate for the organization for over twenty-five years. Relis has been a member of the South Shreveport Rotary Club for many years and is past president. He's a member of the Shreveport Scottish Rite and has been the organization's legal advisor for many years. He currently chairs the Shreveport Area Veterans Memorial Committee, a cross-section of community veterans who work together to address veterans' issues and support projects to honor veterans. This committee raised over a hundred and fifty thousand to design and construct the Veterans Memorial, which is located on Clyde Funt Parkway, which is featured in many of our Honor Ceremony program books. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Relis P. Gottfried.
Thank you. I'm humbled to receive this award. I had the pleasure of knowing and working with Colonel Depesler, very dedicated man to veterans, just as dedicated as Commissioner and Chairman of the Veterans Committee, Kent Aperson, is. It is the veteran who safeguards the liberties, freedoms we enjoy each and every day. It is the veteran who safeguards our right to say what we wish to say, to whom we wish to say it, and where we wish to say it. It is the veteran who safeguarded our right to meet with whoever we wish to meet, wherever we wish to meet. It is the veteran who has safeguarded our right to believe in whatever we wish to believe and how we practice that belief. It is the veteran who has safeguarded our right in foreign countries when our country has called upon him or her to do that in conflict and has come home sometimes sadly wounded, whether it be physically and/or psychologically. So I am indeed honored to receive this award, but not for me, but for veterans. And I hope and ask that when you see a veteran or you see someone in military uniform, you will say to that person, "Thank you for your service to our great country. I appreciate the Veterans Coordination Committee, Celebration Committee, giving this award," but again, it is not for me personally, it is for veterans. Thank you.
Relis, Mr. Gottfried, Mr. Gottfried. Vernon asking if he'd turn around and stand in case there's some photos before we close. Ms. Crystal, you have everything you need? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for indulging us, realizing due, due to the, uh, pardon.
I think there's another photographer that'd have some pictures afterwards, if again...
Can we get everyone together?
Okay. Uh, i- if we could, let's get all the award recipients lined up, uh, Vernon.
Yes, sir.
Okay, before we close, no man is an island, no man stands alone. With all of our Veterans Celebration Committee members that are present, please stand. Mr. Gedry, uh, don't leave yet. All of our Veterans Celebration members that had an opportunity to be with us today, please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, you are looking at eleven years. This would have been our eleventh year of hosting the, the in-person honor ceremony as well as the parade at the fairground. However, we had to cancel last year's and this year's due to the, uh, due to the pandemic. However, we did find a way to recognize our veterans. You all may be seated, uh, virtually, and as well as recognize them today with the lifting of the, uh, of the, of the CDC protocols relative to meeting in this chamber. Uh, we always open for more members. We, we have a dedicated committed group. We meet an hour or less. Our schedules are planned from February up through November when the Veterans Parade, so everyone knows where they have to be, when they have to be there, at the beginning of the year in February, so there's no excuses. And as our motto is, "Veterans, America's First Hero." Every day should be Veterans Day in America. Our upcoming agenda for this year, and we can't do it alone, we're looking for each and every one of you out there. We want to put on the table a Northwest Louisiana Veterans and Military Museum. And we also want to do an effort to get Colonel Depeslers put on a United States poster stamp. Mr. Chairman, thank you for your indulgence.
Yes, sir, thank you, Commissioner Aperson. I'd like to try to keep this back on schedule. It was a wonderful presentation, we appreciate it, but I wanted to make sure that everybody around the horseshoe might have an opportunity to say a few short words if, if they would like. Anybody I see? Commissioner, uh, Burrell on the, on the board.
Yeah, we've had a, um, quite a ceremony, uh, Commissioner Aperson, and I just wanted to say from the standpoint of, um, of my appreciation for the service that, uh, these veterans have, uh, have done. My oldest brother, um, went to the service out of nine boys, and I was getting ready to go in seventy-five until Vietnam War shut down and, and didn't, didn't go in. But, uh, I was committed to go at that time, and I know the sacrifice that you made because a lot of my friends didn't make it back, uh, you know, that I went to high school with. So it's, it's always a, a touching moment whenever we get an opportunity to recognize such heroes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. We have Commissioner Chavez.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to tip my hats to the veterans. As a fellow veteran that went to Kuwait and Iraq in oh-four, you guys had it way worse than us. And you guys, you, you pushed the way for us to have it a lot easier, and, and I acknowledge that, and I wanted to pay my respect while you guys are here. We had it a lot easier, and we had people that appreciated us when we came home, and they thanked us, and it, it took decades for you guys to get the enjoyment of those thank yous that we get now. So, so my hat's off to y'all, and, and thank you for, for pushing forward ahead of us, ahead of the guys that, that get to enjoy the celebration of what you guys did for us. So, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Atkins Chair. I just want to say, uh, congratulations, and I agree that every day should be, uh, Veterans Day. Um, the, uh, sacrifice that veterans make for our country or have made for our country, um, we can't repay you, uh, for your service and your sacrifice, uh, not only your personal sacrifice, but the sacrifices that your families, uh, endure as well. So, we know that nobody serves and go at it alone. Your families, uh, go at it as well, and as you try to readjust back into civilian life, um, you know, those things at times can be a challenge. So, uh, thank you for your service, and I know we just had a great ceremony, but, and we thank all of the awardees as well as the committee members, but definitely want to tip our hat to, uh, Commissioner Aperson, who also, uh, leased this effort, uh, in a very, uh, um...
Dedicated, energetic way?
Dedicated way. I was looking for one of those big words, but a very dedicated way, just keep it simple. Uh, he keeps us on point, all things veterans. When issues come up and, uh, are de- identified a possible lane for veterans' voice, uh, he's that voice. So, uh, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. President, Acting President.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Talfarro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, again, thank you, Commissioner Aperson for, you know, being the tip of the spear for putting this together to honor our, our veterans who have given so much. Uh, I, as a veteran myself, along with Commissioner Chavez, um, I just want to echo his sentiments as well, that, uh, we are not where we are without you. You have paved the way, whether, regardless of which military branch of service you were in. Um, we don't do this, we don't get where we are by ourselves, we get there together. And there are people like you, men and women, who stood up, was the tip of the spear, who answered the call, who told the American public that they get to sign a blank check and send you wherever they need you. I am humbled, I, I respect you, and I honor you today as well, and I appreciate your service, and, um, words cannot express the gratitude that every American should have for every veteran that has served. Thank you so much for defending our country, the greatest country that God has ever created. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Talfarro. Um, and while we, in wrapping up this section of the agenda, let me again reiterate our thanks to Commissioner Aperson for his leadership on this matter, and let me also thank him for his service as a veteran, along with Commissioner Chavez, Commissioner Talfarro, and Dr. Wilson for their service. I think that's all the veterans we have up, up here around the horseshoe, but thank you all, we, we appreciate and value your service.
We have some in the audience, Mr. Chairman, some of our workers.
I'm sorry, Ms.?
Some of our workers and, uh, some civilians may be in the audience as veterans, if you'd ask them to stand.
Yes, any veterans, if may sta- any veterans out there, if you might stand so we can recognize you? Thank you very much. And thank you all for attending the ceremony today. I might propose that we just pause the agenda for a moment, so anyone who would like to leave at this time is free to leave. You're always welcome to stay, but if you want to take this moment to, to, um, get back home or take care of some other business, we certainly understand. Thank you all for coming. I think Commissioner?
Pause?
Pardon?
We take a pause?
I think we'll have to take a pause because we've lost, uh, lost our quorum as, uh, two commissioners just stepped out. So...
You still have a quorum?
You still have it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? All right, let's just, like, give everybody a moment to...
Now you don't do that, do you?
You actually have a quorum now, being that, um, six is a quorum at the moment.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and get, get rolling, just to keep the, um, keep, keep us from being here too late.
The next visitor that you have on your agenda today is Jim Graves, um, speaking of veterans, uh, but today he is here joining us, uh, representing the Long Range Planning and Special Projects Committee's Citizen Advisory Committee to Study World Planning.
Thank you, General Graves, for, for being here with us today, and thank you for your work on your committee.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Atkins, and, uh, I, I am actually here at the invitation of, uh, my fellow veteran and Veterans Chair, Commissioner Aperson. Uh, and I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Aperson, you for inviting me today and all of... And I want to thank Commissioner Epperson, you for inviting me today, and all of you for the opportunity you have given us to serve on the Long Range Planning and Zoning Citizens Advisory Committee that this organization created. With me this afternoon are our Secretary, Jessica Tullis, and our Chairman of what we call the Committee on Style, the Writing Committee, Chris Crackman. We also want to thank the good offices of the Parish Attorney, Ms. Frazier, and particularly Mr. Henry Bernstein for the support that he's given us during our evening meetings. And Mr. Everson, as opposed to Epperson, the Clerk of the Commission, thank you and your good offices and staff for making this facility available to us for our meetings and for the public. And in that regard, I also want to thank you, Mr. Everson, for televising our meetings when you've been able to do so. And if I could just prevail on you to do it one more time when we meet tomorrow, we plan to wrap it up and get you our report. We have created a process that I think reflects credit upon this commission and reflects credit upon the citizens of Caddo Parish, that we have been inclusive, diverse, open, and transparent. And we followed the acronym CADDO RISES. That is, we respect, we treat our citizens with integrity, service, excellence, and an enduring interest in their safety and security. And with that guidance, that CADDO RISES, we hope that this will be an enduring improvement that we bring you. Now, when something like this happens, I've always found that when you're chairing a fact-finding and public inclusion body, you have a strategic choice to make right at the beginning. Do you want to do it quick, or do you want to do it right? And we chose to do it right, to be available to the public, to bring in every public input we could get, to try to truly listen to our citizens, even if they were telling us things that we didn't particularly want to hear. I've spent over four decades of my life in public service in one form or another, and one of the things that I have observed in those four decades is that in public service, we have a proclivity, a bias for action. But if there's a problem, we want to come up with a program. We want to convene a board. We want to create an office. We want to put somebody in charge. We want to get her done. But in this particular instance, what we have found in listening to our citizens is that they don't want us to just sit there, but do something. They want us to maybe not do something, but just sit there. They have looked at areas like the north part of our own parish, represented by Commissioner Hopkins, who unfortunately couldn't be here, the southwest part of the parish, represented by Mr. Lazarus, where they don't have zoning activities. They don't have boards. They've looked across the state line, 13 miles to the west into Texas, the rural areas of Texas that don't have zoning boards and commissions and don't have zoning rules. They've looked at the city of Houston, Texas, the largest city in the United States that doesn't have zoning, and yet proudly boasts more affordable housing than any other city in America. So while I can't forecast what is going to be the final report of our committee, I can tell you, as someone who accepted this charge, not for the purpose of imposing my own ideas on the committee or on the public, but rather accepts it as a sacred charge to create a safe space for the other members of the committee, including the father of one of our commissioners, to feel free to express their opinion and for the public to make their input, that the input that we've received has been overwhelming in that direction. And with Mr. Crackman's good efforts overnight and a good meeting tomorrow, and again, hopefully, Mr. Everson, we can get that out for our citizens to see the transparency of our process, we will be able to wrap this up and bring it to you. And with that, Commissioner Epperson, I salute my fellow veteran and conclude my report, sir. I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, General Graves. I see Commissioner Jackson on the board.
Yes, thank you, General. I tried to kind of follow what you were saying. I heard you note that at the end there, where you noted that there's a consensus for no zoning, no boards, no staff in the areas where Todd and Commissioner Lazarus, was there any conversation or consideration for areas like West Shreveport, where Commissioner Epperson and Commissioner Gabe Watt, they don't, they're in the city limits, but they're in the parish?
Yes.
Or South Shreveport, where Commissioner Atkins is, where, you know, they, some are in the city limits, some are out, but they're not, you know, you have one side of the street that could be in the city limits, subject to zoning and planning of the MPC, and you have another side of the street that can be subject to planning and zoning or nothing by the parish. Have y'all had that conversation? And what was the extent of depth of it?
Yes, sir, we have. And we have been very careful and very respectful not to invade any of the prerogatives of the city of Shreveport. And the other body that meets in these chambers is the City Council. That the city of Shreveport is, of course, self-governing. But we would like to be, to some degree, self-governing as well, those of us who live outside of the incorporated areas of Caddo Parish and outside the city limits. And the opinions that we have heard, and I call on my fellow committee members to correct me if I'm omitting anything, have been overwhelming, that they want the city's limits of its authorities to be at the city limits. And outside the city limits have the same open zoning. I don't want to say no zoning, because this is not a negative. This is a trust-your-neighbor program rather than trust a created government entity. And where we find that we can trust our neighbors, it seems to have worked quite well. And by the way, that sort of freedom works.
So I just want...
And it's also much less costly.
So I just want to be, I guess I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying is, for areas like, that I just named, they're open to, when you say open zoning, they mean, what's that?
That it is, it is in effect no zoning other than by ordinance from this commission. That is not to say that anybody is asserting an absolute right to do anything they want on their property. It is not an absolute right, but not the close management of the Unified Development Code or the Metropolitan Planning Commission staff.
Thank you.
Their goal is to be relieved of that. And by the way, also the Master Plan 2030.
Okay.
That indeed is what I've heard. Am I correct in my sense?
I'm good. I got you. I hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Chairman. General, you guys have worked extremely hard, and I applaud all the hard work. I've watched the meetings. Thank you, Mr. Everson, for streaming them online. It was very convenient to watch them stay abreast of what's going on. I think the team that's been assembled has been amazing and has represented the voices of the people in the rural areas of the parish. I know that this was sent to the Long Range Planning, and as a commissioner that lives within the city limits, I couldn't put my opinion on this. So I thank you guys for taking the charge and getting the opinions of the people that live in the rural, and I anticipate a great report. I know you still have one more meeting tomorrow night, so I won't request any absolutes. But while you guys were all here assembled, I want to make sure the public knew that you guys have been working very hard and diligently and have been very respective of the people's opinion within the rural areas of the parish. And that's exactly the charge that you guys were given, so thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Graves, for coming. Just wanted a little update, and so I see you'll be meeting tomorrow, and it should be your final meeting. You come to us with a final package. And I just want to let everybody know that you may not have everyone down here in these committees, but they are watching. And some of our, like, my area is about 64, about 6% rural, 40% urban. I can stand on Annie Lovelace and Santa Monica. I can spread my legs 18 inches apart, and left leg will be in the city, right leg in the parish. Got some homes down there that is valued at, you know, upward 700, 800,000. And then you got a rural area that's, I mean, and when you, when you appraise these areas, you go within a radius now. I don't care about no lines, you know what I mean? But then you got people that owns a partial land, and they want to stick anything on it. And I'm hoping that you will look at, I think we have a case now that's in litigation on that. I want you, you need to look at all of those things, too. Maybe go into history, see what kind of litigation you've had, what litigation you have currently. But appreciate the choice that you have. However, you know, you may not see me down here or anybody from our area, but we are conscious as to what's going on, and I got a lot of interest in what's transpiring here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for coming.
We will.
Thank you again, General Graves. And to Commissioner Epperson's point, we're all interested in your committee. We don't necessarily want to interfere with your committee, so we often let the committee meet, and we listen and get y'all's views without influencing that process.
Well, I thank you for that, but please feel welcome to attend. I will point out that Commissioner Atkins was there for our organizational meeting and has been invited to come back. Since then, Commissioner Hopkins was there for our second meeting and presented to us our charge on his Resolution 42. And you're, of course, all welcome.
Thank you, thank you again for your service on this committee and for your service to our country.
I think...
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Jackson.
I got to piggyback on something that was said about respecting opinions, and I know y'all about to wrap up. And I watch your meetings online, and I watch your comments, and I think you basically, when you kick off the meetings, you give the committee sort of a charge, and I appreciate that. In your final meeting, as y'all wrap up, if you could relay that same sentiment about respecting others' opinions, because what I see often in some of the traffic online and even personally by some of the members, in fact, one that I let serve in my area or to represent my area at the request of Commissioner Hopkins, I didn't have a problem with it, but it gets kind of ugly, it gets kind of nasty about the people around you. I'm not saying that you have to go out and praise us, but we have opinions up here, too. And what often happens is those opinions that we have or positions that we take are often misconstrued, and that's how we end up with the ugliness. I have watched all of the meetings online as they were streamed, and I've paid, even though I haven't come down, I've paid attention to them. And the respect has to go both ways, and so we're going to respect the whatever comes out of it. Now, what we decide to do, I don't know, and I can't predict. But we want to make sure, and I don't know who else may feel this way, but I can tell you that just some of the commentary and some of the personal experience, even showing up to my house...
Well, thank you, Commissioner Jackson, and that indeed is the reason why in that acronym that I use for guidance, the first letter is respect.
Yes.
Is R for respect.
Yeah. And we have to draw the line.
Yeah.
And to be the bigger person, like I say, when Todd came and asked if that person can serve, I kind of had to perk up a little bit, but being the bigger person, I said, yeah.
All right. Well, it is amazing, with that particular virtue, the more you give, the more you get.
Thank you.
So true.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you again, General Graves. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
All right, that brings us to old business. We have no scheduled old business for today's meeting, so we'll move forward to new business, where you have quite a few items today. The first item is to authorize the introduction of Ordinance Number 2021 in relation to zoning Code 21-30-P. That's an ordinance to amend Volume 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended. The Caddo Parish Unified Development Code by amending the zoning of property located on the east side of Ratcliffe Road, approximately 400 feet south of Roach Road in Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to I1 Light Industrial District, and otherwise provide respect there, too, and this is in District 7.
A motion to move to Thursday.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to advance and a second. Is there any comment?
Mr. Chair, this is an ongoing ordinance that SWEPCO is developing in the area. I've had the privilege of sponsoring and carrying this ordinance through since 2015, so this is another initiative that they are finishing.
Thank you, Commissioner Gabe Watts.
And for the record, who was the second?
Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
I don't mean to create any confusion here, but now I'm lost. So in your area outside of, is this area inside or outside of the city limits that we are?
It's considered inside of the city limits. But I think that area where Ratcliffe runs off of Jefferson Page Road is parish.
And SWEPCO is active, and SWEPCO is supportive of this change?
Yes, this is their program, yes.
And so if this change takes place, and then we get to January 1, then what? Can somebody give guidance? Do y'all see the confusion? Or do y'all, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one confused, but we'll approve this change, but does, January 1, does this go away?
No.
No. Everything up to, any action you take up to the end of the year will still stand?
Okay.
Unless someone takes action to rescind...
To rescind? But I just heard them say that they didn't want to be under the UDC.
There has not been a zoning board that would handle these decisions.
Okay, so right now it's...
But basically, the processes will be the same unless or until you all actually make changes to the code.
Got you.
The only difference will be, there will be a separate board that will take care of these items.
Got you. I mean, I support, I just wanted to make sure that when we have a separation, that we know what we're doing when we do that separation, so.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. All right, so we have a motion to advance and a second. Shall we debate?
All right, everybody, boot.
All right, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us to the next item, which is 8.2, to authorize the introduction of Ordinance Number 6146 of 2021. That's an ordinance amending the budget of estimated revenues and expenditures for the Oil and Gas Fund to provide an appropriation of up to $100,000 to relocate to Caddo Parish for a relocating to Caddo Parish advertising campaign and to otherwise provide...
Moves to advance.
Second.
We had a motion from Commissioner Young and a second from Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. So this is an idea that I discussed with, I think it was the Long Range Planning Commission last year when we were paying to help build water systems in Blanchard and Greenwood. I mentioned in those committee meetings that I hoped that we wouldn't only be building water systems for people who already lived here to move around, but to increase capacity so that we could increase population. And at the time, we said, well, that's a topic for another day. I originally sent this to Commissioner Cawthorn as head of the Economic Development Committee. Since that committee does not actively have a chair right now, I put it on the agenda today for our discussion. It is intended to advertise Caddo Parish as a good place to live to places that have, to places that lack some of our positive qualities, particularly insulation from natural disaster, plentiful water supplies, which is... disaster, plentiful water supplies, which is the water system connection, and particularly targeting people who are participating in the nationwide trend of remote work so that they could bring their incomes here, benefit from our low housing prices and plentiful natural resources, and increase our population and tax base. The number is somewhat arbitrary, and that's why I said up to. Since we could talk about this in committee, I'm not sure exactly how that would work right now, but I'd be happy to entertain any amendments or referrals to committee that we, that we might want to have for this. I just wanted us to begin the discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes, I was gonna ask if it's okay if I could make a motion to, to amend this to broadening, to broaden the target audience. Are you okay with that? To, I think it's a great idea. And just trying to make sure we capture more than remote workers. I think, you know, remote workers is the way to go. But I think even for industry, I like to see us target industry, certain sectors of industry as well. And so, I just like to add that to the, the target. A diverse, Jeff, maybe the amendment would be a diverse, on the, do I need a second for it or whatever? Or does it have to be a friendly amendment? I don't know.
Does it have a first? It doesn't hear.
Does it need a second? Is that right?
Jeff?
Okay, I got the motion and the second, and I believe I understand.
Just to be a, I guess, a diverse.
To, to broaden the range of the advertising to include.
Different sectors.
Industry and, yeah. I, I will, I will better word it later, but I am understanding the motion if you are.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Commissioner Epperson?
I'm not in support of this either way. I think it's premature. We have North Louisiana Economic Partnership. We got the State of Louisiana Economic, uh, entity in the island Baton Rouge. We got, uh, IDB Board, and we have a hell of a website here. So, I, I don't see if we need this, you know. So, I think if anything, we might need to take this off the table and talk about it and refine it more, but at this point in time, this is premature. I think we got enough entities out there selling what Caddo Parish is. And our website certainly can do that.
Is that it?
I'm not gonna support it either. I think it's premature. I think this stuff should be maybe discussed at some committee level first, but I just don't see no reason for it. We already have entities that are already in place that have funding, and that's their charge.
Okay. Is that it? Commissioner Epperson? Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Chairman. Dr. Wilson, now that Commissioner Jackson made that amendment, would this qualify what I've been asking for in regards to promoting the manufacturing in Southern Hills of, of the glass factory?
We'll have, I think it may be.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have to define the target audience that, that we want to try to reach on this initiative. Sounds like doing business and living in Parish of Caddo.
I often see commercials for like Las Vegas and Wyoming and Nebraska, and it looks cool and it makes me want to go there. Commissioner Epperson brought up a couple other local entities. Do you know if, if we're collectively marketing Caddo Parish like those Las Vegas commercials in other places?
No, sir. Other than the Tourist Bureau, no, sir.
Okay.
The other economic development entities specific to industry types, and they go at local resources like industrial parks that's already available and trying to market those properties, but not as a general place to live and thrive and invest and grow. I don't, I don't think we have that component in place yet.
Would, would this qualify whenever the new park is done to bring in huge conventions, to, to have a convention at the new park that we're gonna build and spend millions on?
Uh, yes, sir. That'd be a different marketing plan and strategy towards marketing that facility.
Okay.
But it'd, it'd be part of an overall marketing plan that's bigger in scope to try to leverage to the, the new facility when it's built.
And I guess the last question, the public's gonna see a hundred thousand dollars and that obviously seems like a, a big amount, but on our ROI, if we could get some industry here or get some citizens here, how does that look in our budget? What I'm asking is, do you think this would be a good ROI for the commission?
It's, it's kind of hard to measure the ROI on advertisements unless you're specific to industry type. But I think the plan is to get people to come and live here, right, Commissioner Young? And, and you measure that by property being sold, new houses being constructed. Those metrics are in place, we can measure that. You know, a number of apartments are being rented. Those are indicators that things are going on the uptick. And then we also, I guess, we have to wait every so often to do a census report and to find out who's actually here, who's not.
I, I heard a, I heard a marketing saying one time, in good times, you advertise, in bad times, you have to. So, I guess the question is, is this, is this a good time, i.e. do we have the available funds to make this happen?
Uh, we always have the funds, it just depends on what we take it out of.
I got you.
You know?
Okay.
And if y'all think it's worthwhile endeavor, then we, we try to do our best to execute what you all want us to do.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Very, very innovative idea, Commissioner. Thanks, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Burrell?
Mr. Chairman, I was trying to get my, my head around exactly what they're, what was being asked for, but I would like to see this sort of spelled out a little bit more. I think it's a good idea. But there are entities that are out there that's doing some of the same thing, maybe something that we can supplement. I would consider a substitute motion to send it to committee. And if not economic development, I guess I would trust Chavez to look into it.
You can send it.
And, and maybe give us some more detail before I can be, where I can be comfortable, if I can get a second.
Well, actually, Commissioner Burrell, you know, we need to lead with our, with our motion, but I'll lead with your motion.
Since I didn't stop talking, I thought it'd just be part of it.
Right. So, I'll lead with the motion to, to submit this to long-range planning for consideration.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. All right. So, that's all we have on the board. We currently have a vote on the substitute motion to move this to long-range planning. Is that right, Mr. Clerk? And if so, let's call for the vote.
That is correct.
With the amendment?
That is a motion from Commissioner Atkins, seconded by Commissioner Burrell, to refer this to the Long Range Planning Committee.
And can we roll in Commissioner Jackson's amendment in that as well, please, sir?
Yeah, we start again, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ready to vote? Let's vote.
And that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us to the next.
Point of information.
Yes, Commissioner Jackson?
So, I, I got a question. So, does this, never mind. I'll ask it off the record. Never mind.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, the next item is to authorize the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one forty-seven of twenty-twenty-one. That's an ordinance to donate surplus property under Chapter nineteen, Article two, Division three of the Code of Ordinances relative to donation of adjudicated property acquired by the parish under Louisiana Revised Statutes forty-seven, twenty-two thirty-six, et sec, to authorize the donation of property to People of Praise Incorporated to address substandard housing and provide a benefit to low and moderate income residents of distressed areas and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Move to advance to Thursday.
Second.
We have a motion to advance by Commissioner Jackson, a second by Commissioner Young. Commissioner Jackson, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Atkins Chair. This is a ordinance that we actually did back in June, July, the summer, that started the process of supporting People of Praise requests to acquire these properties. I don't know that they're doing housing. I think they're just gonna kind of clear this out. They have a home-based school in the Lakeside area that they are very, they're very active in, and so, we approved it, we approved the process, and so, any additional questions, I'll defer to Attorney Henry Bernstein or Jimmy on them, but they work these processes with the, with the organizations, and we're at the point now to where we would, Henry, is this correct, making the actual, Donald, is this, making the actual donation? Oh, there he is. I didn't know he was over there.
That's what the stuff.
So, this basically makes the act of donation official, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Is that it? Okay. Commissioner Burrell?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem in donating property, but after, after serving twelve years on the Tax Cell Committee down there at the Law Institute, this adjudicated property normally is property that, that the parish has an interest in. My question is, is this property clear or this parish has an interest because the owner of the, of the property, wherever it is or whoever it is, may still have an interest in this? And are we donating property that we don't have total ownership of?
Title?
Commissioner, basically, this property has gone through the process. This will terminate, this particular ordinance terminates the parish's interest, but before we get to this point, the other procedures to terminate any other interests have already been followed.
Okay, so, it's, it's clear then, far as, far as you're concerned? Because when you say adjudicated, I know that says, that says something different to me, um, when you, when you talk about adjudicated property. So, okay, well, it sounds like it's, it's clear, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Chair. Attorney Frazier, you're saying that these have a clear title, and if somebody comes to contest it, that the parish will be out of it completely?
The parish will be out of it completely. They have several persons that have had to be notified in order to assert an interest. If those persons are not notified, once the parish donates its interest, if they want to do a final munitions suit, they can.
Did, did the parish have to pay to get any of the titles resolved? Or is there, did we pay for title insurance on these?
No.
Okay.
No, we only have a tax title interest. That's all we're giving up.
And these are, they're getting donated to this nonprofit for the use of, of low-income housing, correct?
Oh, not real sure what the.
It's a school. It's for supporting their school. And Claire, now, it's a blighted piece of area. They're supporting their school. They actually have to do an application.
These are all continuous properties?
To assist low and moderate income residents in work to reduce, eliminate the blighted structures is what the purpose of the ordinance is.
I understand that. I guess what's the, what's the end, what's the end use? What's the end goal? To, to build on these, homes or a school?
I defer to Mr. Bernstein, if he knows.
Commissioner, I'm trying to get access to my files to look up the application.
I'll, I'll get with you offline, Henry, before Thursday. I yield, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jackson, you back on the board?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Atkins Chairman. I would, maybe next time when we do these, we should probably also attach their applications because they do go through an application process. My understanding is they pay for the fees, all of the fees. This was a program that the parish established called Reinvest Caddo, and it helps kind of speed, well, I wouldn't necessarily say speed up, but it helps them get to a clear title on some of the, and that's been the issue, is getting a clear title. My understanding is that this is the, they have a school. They do like home-based schooling, and they wanted these properties across the street that have been kind of run down in the area, and they want to clear those properties out. I think one piece of property will be used for like a park, one piece of property will be used for a parking lot, and then I think the other may be another for a structure for a, an additional school-based setting. So, they have multiple uses for these properties, but it can be used for housing as well. So, that is an option. But I believe the overall goal here was to reduce blight, and then, one is for sort of a green space park for their school, for the students to play in, the other is for a parking lot, and then the other is for a, another structure. I can't necessarily, I think it's called home-based schooling or something like that, but their school's literally right there, and the, the children or the families, they live there and they also go to school there. So, it's not necessarily boarding school, but it's an interesting concept. They're on Harvard and I think Yale Street, so I would encourage anybody in who wants to take a drive through Lakeside to take a look at it and see the amazing work that they're doing. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Burrell?
Just one other question. How much property are we talking about here?
I guess three lots, three or four lots?
Oh, just three or four lots.
Should be listed in the.
Okay. All right. I go through there to go to church, and I'm thinking I know where you're talking about, Laurel and, what is that, Sycamore? Close to there?
No, come back a little bit. Murphy, you can get there off of Murphy. I, I would get there, but you can't get there off of Laurel. But Murphy and, Murphy and Harvard.
Harvard and, and Laurel.
Yeah. I think, but I think it did, I think there's a, and I think the city abandoned it maybe. I'm looking over there, Jeff. But I think the city may have abandoned part of that street or something.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Seeing nothing else, no one else on the board, you know, we, of course, can do additional research between now and Thursday, and I encourage everybody to pursue additional questions that you may have.
And attach the application.
So, that being said, we have a, we have a motion and a second to forward this to Thursday. Can we call for a vote, Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Talia Faro? Commissioner Gage-Watt?
All right, and that motion carries with eight in support, none in opposition, and four absent. And that brings us to the next item, which is the authorization of the introduction of ordinance number sixty-one forty-eight of twenty-twenty-one. That's an ordinance enacting Section eight dash thirty-seven point one of the Caddo Parish Code of Ordinances regarding the mandatory sterilization of pit bull-type dogs.
Move to advance.
Second.
We had a motion by Commissioner Young, a second by, I'm gonna say Commissioner Burrell because that's the one I heard.
Yeah.
Commissioner Young, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, thank you. I have a, I've prepared a small speech to read on this occasion, which is rare for me. But before I start, I'd like to say that we have discussed this in the Animal Services Committee twice, and I think now it is ready to discuss in the full body. And I hope that we can continue our discussion through Thursday and have a vote on Thursday whether to advance or, whether to approve or deny it. So, here's my little speech. The commission has the sole authority over the regulation of animals in Caddo Parish. That gives us not only a right, but also a duty to pass good laws for animal control. Currently, one-third of dogs entering our custody are pit bulls. About eighty percent of the dogs in our kennels are pit bulls. More than fifty percent of the dogs we euthanize are pit bulls, and this number is in the hundreds every year. This is because pit bulls are overpopulated in Caddo Parish. To fulfill our duty to control the animal population for public safety, we must either institute a new policy to spay-neuter pit bulls or continue our current policy of spending our money and manpower to catch and kill their puppies. Pit bulls are great dogs. They are naturally loving, loyal, strong, and brave. Pit bulls are also excellent fence climbers, and if they are intact, that is not spayed and neutered, they are highly motivated to escape their enclosures and breed. A female pit bull can produce up to ten puppies per year. Pit bulls are great, but their owners vary. Some owners are responsible and know already that an altered pit bull is better behaved and cannot recklessly breed. Some owners are less responsible and keep pit bulls intact, which allows them to breed indiscriminately and produce more dogs than our community can humanely manage. There are not enough homes in Caddo Parish for all the pit bulls that are recklessly bred here, and even after hundreds are shipped to other states for adoption every year, animal services must still catch, kill, catch, cage, and kill pit bulls by the hundreds. This is fundamentally inhumane, both to pit bulls and to our animal services staff. So much of our animal control officer's time is occupied by pit bulls that they have trouble efficiently responding. that they have trouble efficiently responding to citizens' calls. We can change this dynamic with a sane, moderate rule, requiring pit bulls in Caddo to be spayed and neutered. This law provides that the financial cost of pit bull sterilization will be borne by taxpayers. This results in a cost savings over time in both money and manpower as the out-of-control population of pit bulls begins to decline. A decline in our pit bull population will free up time and resources at animal services and reduce the need for the costly expansion of our parish kennels. We have already observed this cost savings with stray cats because of the spay-neuter work, especially of Robinson's Rescue. Another moderate feature of this rule is that it is temporary and lasts for only two years, after which we can evaluate its success in controlling the animal population here. There are objections to this rule on philosophical grounds. One goes like this. My dog is my property and I should be able to do what I want with it. If this is true, then mandatory rabies shots should be optional instead. Also optional should be whether an owner provides shelter for a dog from the elements or keeps it outdoors on a heavy chain, or feeds it adequately, or confines it in an adequate enclosure. An absolute unregulated, unregulated property right in our dogs would allow us to impose heavy costs on our neighbors and put public safety in jeopardy. So does the supposed right to own an intact pit bull, which is extremely likely to escape and recklessly reproduce, as our animal statistics clearly show. Another objection is that despite our clear statistics that show overpopulation in only one dog type, regulating only that one type of dog would be unfair. The objection goes, all dogs should be regulated the same, so either all dogs should be required to be spayed and neutered, or none. Requiring no dogs to be spayed and neutered leads us to the inhumane situation we have today, where we catch and kill pit bulls and take them to the landfill like garbage. On the other hand, requiring all dogs to be spayed and neutered, with the reasonable exceptions of responsible breeders and medical conditions, is an even better rule. And if any of my colleagues will offer that as an amendment or substitute in place of a pit bull-specific rule, I will regard it as friendly and vote for it. We must do something to control the animal population in Caddo Parish. And it is inhumane and inefficient to attempt to euthanize our way to a healthy population size when we could instead use sterilization. The alternatives are sterilization or euthanization. I think the ethical choice is clear. Please vote to support it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young, for that well-prepared speech. Mr., Commissioner Epperson?
I pass.
Commissioner Jackson, oh, sorry, Talafaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, as a member of the Animal Services Committee, I did, I did attend the meeting the other day. And I voted to, I voted not to send this recommendation to the full body only because personally, I wanted to do a little bit more research and to hopefully craft a more comprehensive ordinance for the protection of this and all breeds, you know, from any physical and emotional abuse that, you know, they may incur, while respecting the individual, individual rights of the owners. I would like to, as I told Commissioner Young, I would like to send it back with a little bit further discussion because implementing the ordinance and crafting and implementing it without clear, concise measures of enforcement, I, I don't, I believe that's the right way to go. Ironically enough, people that do know that I, I do a lot of fostering and, and I just released five, five puppies to go to Wisconsin. As Ms. Everett knows, you know, the North is very accepting of our, of our puppies down here. But in, in doing that, I traded five for two pit bull mixes. So I do have them in my custody. So it's not like I am against the pit bull regulation or the ordinance proposal. I would just like the opportunity to do a little bit more research to make sure that we craft a great ordinance that protects not only this breed, but all breeds, and then stays in line with the individual rights of the pet owner. So, thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it. And thank you, John Paul Young, for crafting this ordinance and presenting it to us today.
Thank you, Commissioner Talafaro. Commissioner Jackson?
I'm just curious, so with the ordinance, if a pit bull is, if a pit bull attacks somebody or if it's deemed dangerous or something, this doesn't void that process by deeming it dangerous or something like that, does it? That's a question to the...
Mr. Vice President, may I add that?
Go ahead, yes.
This ordinance, as currently written, does not change any of the rules regarding vicious animals. A pit bull would only be sterilized if it came into contact with animal control officers who detected that it was intact. That would mean one that came into the shelter or was seen out in the field in response to a complaint, something like that.
Oh, so you're not just gonna go round up pit bulls and get them sterilized?
That is not currently anyone's plan, no.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Vice President. Mr. Clerk, if I can get you for a minute, I just want to get your opinion on this. I know as, as the elected representatives for the different districts, there are times we have to make tough decisions. But for a decision like this, I'd like to get your opinion on, on, do you feel that this would, would help the situation? And are you in favor of this?
I definitely feel that it's a step in the right direction.
Okay. I know he said he would be willing to do, accept the amendment of any commissioner on here that wanted to do all of them. But starting, I think, if this is, if this only has a two-year clause on it and then it could sunset. So for two years, do you think if we ran this program for two years, it would give us a good, I guess, beta test to know what our numbers look like in two years?
Well, I think the, the standing metric would be how many are we getting spayed and neutered? Because we can always go back and pull the statistics to see how many puppies and young dogs are coming into the facility.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate your time, Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Young, it's, I applaud you for, for bringing this to the floor. It's, it's a tough decision and ultimately, we play a lot of politics up here and sometimes we don't want to do things that are unfavorable. But as, as a leader, sometimes we have to make a tough decision. This is a good, a good way to start. Everybody always states that the northern states have tough laws and we have none. But we have an ample amount of, of dogs at sea paws and we have no clear vision in the future of how to lower that number. This is obviously a way that we can do this now to my colleagues. And it's not a forever, it's for two years, so I, I'm in favor of it. I think we should vote on it. I think we should see what's gonna happen in two years. And if this is obviously successful, and if, if we can deem it successful in one year, then we can come back and looking at doing some additional, some additional breeds or just do a blanket like what Commissioner Young is suggesting. I know in business, I, I own a company and there are times when things come up, when issues arise. And sometimes it's not, it's not popular to make that decision with the employees, but I have to make a decision. And if it works, then we continue to do it. If it doesn't work, then we shift back. This is a scenario where we have a crossroad where we have a lot of people saying that, I think we should do this. We have the animal service director saying, I think this is a good step in the right direction. He obviously can't tell us what to do, but we can make this decision collectively and we have the availability to get the data in a year or two and see within our term, was this a good decision? And if it wasn't, we can change the decision. But I think we have the opportunity right now to make this decision and it would be the progress of Caddo Parish. So, thank you, Commissioner Young, for bringing this forward. I'll give my time back to you, President.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Talafaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just neglected that I'd like to make a motion to, to remand this back to the committee for a little bit further discussion.
Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Talafaro, a second from Commissioner Epperson to, to remand this back to the Animal Control Committee for additional discussion. Any other comments on that, Commissioner Talafaro?
No, and like I say, I'm not, I'm not against the ordinance. I'm not against having an ordinance. I'm just really concerned about the enforcement aspect and how we plan on enforcing it. I think there's a lot of, there's, there's things in, that are not addressed in, in the ordinance verbiage, you know, as far as how we're gonna, how we're gonna implement the, the enforcement aspect of this ordinance. And I think just passing an ordinance and not having a clear, concise method of enforcement or who's gonna be vulnerable or how we're gonna proceed, I think there's a lot of things that we just don't know and I'd like further discussion.
Okay, so the motion and a second on the table. We also have Commissioner Gage Watts on the board. Did you have something to add, Commissioner Gage Watts?
I'm gonna yield to Commissioner John Paul Young and then I'll speak.
And then come back? Okay, Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Regarding enforcement, it seemed to me that it was not worth calculating all the details of future enforcement without knowing that the rule would exist. So I have not tried to tame that beast. But I would like to summon Director Clark to the podium again and ask him for any ideas that he might have about enforcement and whether it would be manageable for him and his staff.
Currently, all of the municipal codes and state codes regarding animals are only enforced by us when we make contact with people or when we know of a situation. It will continue as such. Because we have eight officers or we'll have eight full-time officers in the field and they can each make contact with 15 to 20 people a day. So it's not gonna be an overnight thing with implementing this ordinance and making sure that we're following up on all of the dogs that are pity-type once we substantiate that. But again, it is a start. I won't know about the dogs at the property unless someone calls about this dog being out, which is part of the reason this is being enacted anyway, for at-large animals. When commissioners contact us, nine times out of 10, it's a pit bull. It's not a Yorkie. It's not a Snouser. It's not a Shih Tzu. It's a pit bull. And that's who my officers make contact with, those owners. And we'll enforce it as best we can. Commissioner Talafaro used to be SPD officer. They have laws against felons holding guns. I'm sure they were still doing it when he was a police officer. He won't know it unless he comes in contact with it. That's just the way it works.
Thank you, Director Clark. That's all, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the motion to enact the sterilization of all cats and dogs.
Second.
All right, so we have a, would you like to speak on your motion?
Sure, you can go ahead. You have your motion in a second. While I am not in support of isolating a certain breed and as Director Clark said, that most of the calls that I know that I receive are about pit bulls because those are the dogs that most citizens are terrified of. So I am in support of doing something to address that. But at the same time, I do not believe we should isolate any certain animal breed. I know that we have issues with cats as well. So while we have this ordinance on the table for discussion, let's go ahead and put all of those animals in this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Epperson?
Mr. Clerk? While you're on, is there an ordinance, like when people walk their dogs, that they aren't supposed to do their business on someone else's property and they're supposed to carry it? What they call a pooper scoop with them?
A bag to clean it up, yes. That'd be a nuisance violation for sanitation.
Okay, that, that's all I want. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Mr. Clerk? Well, let me, I like to, I like to offer up an amendment to this motion to give up to three months effective, to become effective, to see if I can, or is that already in there?
It's already six months.
It's a six-month.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So it's already an effective delay, okay.
So now education to the citizens.
Gotcha. Okay, that's where I was trying to come from, to address that. So since that's been addressed, I'll go ahead. It sounds like that y'all will look at your staffing to be able to manage this situation? Or do y'all feel y'all have adequate staffing now? Are y'all gonna come back to us before July? What are y'all gonna do before we roll this out?
We're gonna run it with the staff that we have. It's just when we make contact with someone. For instance, we always have to check for rabies vaccinations and things like that, proper enclosure. Now, when we understand that this is a pity-type dog, we go ahead and enforce this aspect as well.
But if, if Commissioner Gage Watts, you're just gonna basically, it's a blanket on everybody, right? You'll check for sterilization on everybody?
If it was a blanket, blanket-type deal, then absolutely.
And y'all feel y'all can handle?
It's, it's just coming in contact with the animal owners. I mean, again...
Do y'all feel y'all can handle?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're handling it as best we can.
Yeah, let me just, our contact, we, we're not gonna go out, start going through...
Right, y'all not going through just picking up, that's what I'm...
This is gonna be on a contact basis.
Okay, like y'all normally do right now?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, yeah. Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. Vice President?
Okay, let's see, we've got Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I serve on the, the Animal Control, I guess, Committee. My question to you is, is there an additional financial, I mean, economic impact that's gonna be placed upon the commission to do all cats and dogs?
You talking about for the spay and neutering services?
Yes, sir.
That is not something that we, that we at Animal Services discussed. That was something that Commissioner John Paul Young was trying to problem solve for. Where would the extra surgeries come from? What facilities would be made readily available to provide those surgeries for citizens for the first six months? Am I correct, Commissioner Young?
The most recent edition of the ordinance might need to be edited because our, for the pit bulls, we had written it to say that for the two-year period, we would, the parish would pay for their sterilization. For all cats and dogs, we could say that owners would be responsible, like barring financial hardship, for instance.
No, I'm saying, I know, I noticed you stated that the parish would pay for the services. But I'm saying, where would the services be rendered? I think that's what commissioners ask.
That, that is not yet determined, but we had imagined increasing funding for Robinson's Rescue to facilitate that.
Yeah, but do, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, you're still on the floor.
Yeah, but, but still, I, I'm still not hearing what kind of additional economic, I mean, economic penalty are we gonna be accepting here in addition to the workload? Or, or is it just totally neutral, adding all of these cats and dogs now?
Well, dependent, well, when the animals come to us, when animals are impounded by us, the owners that reclaim them already have the option to have the animal spayed or neutered at a reduced cost versus getting the animal out intact that can still breed. So we already perform spay-neuter surgeries at the facility.
So, well, let me, let me put it this way. The amendment that Commissioner Gage Watt just put forth, that, that's not gonna impact you at all in terms of your, your, the services that you're gonna provide? Are we throwing in cats and dogs? As well as, well, it's not gonna unpack your office from, from the standpoint of employees or additional costs?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Chavez, second time around, I guess.
Thank you, VP. And just for clarification, and you may not be able to recite this, Director Clark, I think maybe the author may have to. But there was three, three reasons why somebody would have a, a mean to not do it. I think one is if it's an AKC-registered animal.
AKC, UKC, that may want to be amended to ADBA. It's just another, it's American Dog Breeding Association. A, a dog with papers that, you know, they do shows with. It has a, it's a working dog or something to that effect. And the third is a medical, a medical issue that is consulted by a veterinarian. I think those were the three.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, because if the public is watching, I want them, I don't want them to be fearful like, oh, you know, the parish just put down the law where we're gonna come get your pet and spay and neuter it.
That is not the case. Please don't think that.
Right, this, this is just for animals at large that somebody has already called, there's an issue, and ACO has to go out there.
Yes.
Okay, I think, I think if this passes, we're gonna go from the least restrictive to right there with the northern states. So, pretty...
You done?
I'm done.
Commissioner Talafaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk, a quick, couple of quick questions. Other than the eight, the eight, and this is just for those that are viewing in, the, the eight distinguishing characteristics, who would determine those eight?
No, this is all.
This is all what?
It's now all dogs.
Yeah, we're discussing, we're discussing no longer pit bulls, but all dogs.
Well, I think that's, he can still ask that question.
Yeah, it's not germane to the...
All right. Well, I would consider it germane, but that's fine. Let's carry on.
Are you?
All right. Let's see. So, we've got the motion on the table right now is the... Is the motion by Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts to sterilize all cats and dogs. That would be to forward that motion to Thursday's agenda. Pardon?
Lay off for two weeks.
And lay over for two weeks. It would lay... It would be...
Introduced on Thursday.
It'd be introduced on Thursday. Thank you. All right. Mr. Clerk, can we call for a vote?
Yes, and again, this is on the substitute motion from Mrs. Gage Watts, seconded by Commissioner Young. The motion by Commissioner Gage Watts, seconded by Commissioner Young, to include all dogs and cats for sterilization. Okay, and that motion carries with six in support and three in opposition and three absent to advance for introduction to Thursday's meeting. And I did hear some talk just a second ago. So, just for clarification, that would be on for a public hearing on the December 9th meeting.
Okay, December 9th.
So, and that would be... And after that public hearing would be the first opportunity for adoption. So, let's see. That moves us to authorizing Resolution Number 82 of 2021. This is giving written public notice of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Cadda Parish Commission for the calendar year of 2022.
That's all moved.
Second.
Move back, Commissioner Stormy Gage Watts, seconded by Chavez. Commissioner Chavez, any comments on this, Commissioner Gage Watts?
No.
All right. Can we... Any comments, Commissioner Jackson?
Yeah, just in the interest of time, I make a motion and move in globo and advance 82... 82, the Veterans Proclamation, the special resolution for Mr. Kamara, Homeless, Hungry, and Mental Health Month, and all of the... To advance all of the appointments.
I'll second.
And authorize the travel... Authorize the utility of excess funds, authorize Southern University of Los Angeles visitors for Thursday. So, everything except the resolution for ITAP and the bylaws.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Jackson, what were the... Everything except what? Which ones again?
Everything except Resolution 83 and the authori... ITAP exemption.
Application. Okay.
And when you say everything, are you also including the agenda addition, which was the authorizing the adoption of the procedures for filling the vacancy in District 6?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. So, we have... Yes, Commissioner Epperson?
Could we omit 8... 88? Because that's passed already, okay?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, omit 88.
All right. Commissioner Clerk, do you have all that down?
I believe I do. Let me just double-check it. So, what I have is to inglovo and adopt Resolutions 82 and Agenda items. So, in addition to Resolution 82, it's also 8.9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
All right. That's what I... Seventeen and...
Yes, sir. So, that's the rest of the items of new business, save for 83, and then Items 8.7 and 8.8.
Yeah. If we don't, I'll talk for seven minutes on all of them.
What's that?
If we don't approve it, I'll talk for seven minutes on all of them.
All right. So, we vote on the...
If I could, just a point of... Just to, you know, make sure and help it along, just to remind everybody, we do have the authorization of the end-of-the-year appointments on here. These are put on just by position title right now. These are not to be adopted until your December 9th meeting. But I do want to call to your attention that there are quite a few vacancies right now, so please do take note. And if you have somebody that you want to put in one of those positions, or if you have questions about any of those positions that are vacant, please let our office know. We'd be more than happy to provide you some additional information so that we can, you know, get those positions filled, if that is the intention.
Okay. All right. Let's call for a vote on the motion.
Okay, and that motion carries with nine in support, none in opposition, and three absent. And that brings us to the next item, which is to authorize Resolution Number 83 of 2021. That's a resolution amending the rules and bylaws of the Cadda Parish Commission in order to modernize, remove redundant language, reflect current commission practices, and otherwise providing with respect to it too.
Yes. Mr. President, I make a motion to amend this particular one to remove the lang... To strike out the language under Article 1, Rule 2, number I... I mean, letter I at this time? If I get a second on that?
Second.
Item 1...
Yes, item 1, Article 1.
Article 1, Rule 2. Can you repeat that again, Commissioner?
Article 1, Rule 2, letter I.
Letter I.
Like the seating chart.
And for those of us who don't have the ordinance up, can you summarize that for us?
Oh, it's just basically removes the language that says the president shall authorize... Shall be authorized to assigning the seating chart for the body. I just don't recall... I don't recall that coming up when we did our bylaws meeting.
All right. We've got a motion and I can't remember who seconded it.
Commissioner Epperson.
Commissioner Epperson. Commissioner... Did you have anything else to say on that motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, and I was gonna ask... I see Rule 6 and Rule 7 is struck out. Was that struck because it's in the charter?
Let's see.
About the parish shall appoint...
About the what?
The parish shall... The parish administrator shall be appointed and the commission clerk...
Correct. That is a duplication of language from the charter.
Okay. So, those are... Yeah, I just didn't wanna make sure we were firing our administrator and our clerk in here today, so...
Is that it, Commissioner Jackson?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Epperson?
Let's see. I thought I had a D and S highlighted that I got at home, but I don't see nothing highlighted on this. But I thought I... Do we have in here to... In case you can't get a quorum, you send the sheriff out, something like that? Is that in here?
That is a part of the bylaws, and I believe it may have been... The language on that, I believe, was altered because the language, the way it read in the bylaws initially, was that we would command the sheriff to do that, and I believe we changed the language to request the...
Could you tell me what that is? Because I had a highlighted copy of it.
Well, one moment. My computer isn't open to the electronic agenda. If you'll bear with me.
Commissioner Epperson, while he looks at it...
Article...
At your pleasure, may I...
Article 5, Rule 1.
Article 5, Rule 1.
5, 1.
And if I could also, there is an attachment on the... On this item that is a summary of the revisions. In the committee, we did also have a... There's also a list... We had a discussion in the committee, and there is also on there a list of some additional things that were discussed or mentioned. So, if between now and, you know, when this is to be considered or end up for adoption... And I should say at this point, because we don't do bylaw amendments that frequently, this is a three-reader. We don't have a lot of three-readers either. So, this does have... And it's precisely for this reason, is that we don't change this that often. So, we want to give you all time to review it and make sure you're comfortable with what these changes are gonna do. But it would not be adopted or able to be adopted until your first meeting in January. See? Two...
Supermajority.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was... I thought it was three.
Three-four still.
So, it is a two-reader. I'm sorry. So, you could adopt it in December 9th. And... But anyway, that still does provide some time for additional amendments, and I just wanted to call to your attention, some of those items, if you may have had a concern or mentioned something to our office that was an idea, that wasn't proposed or discussed in that meeting, you may find it in that list.
I think Commissioner Epperson still has the floor.
Okay. I just want a point of information. Also, the bylaws takes a three... Three-four. Oh, am I correct? Bylaw changes. Three-fourths.
That's great.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, what I would do is vote on that motion. Was that what you was asking, Commissioner Jackson? Then I'd like to be recognized and make another motion on...
Okay. So, you'd like to see us go ahead and vote on Commissioner Jackson's motion?
Right.
And then...
Then, right.
But if it passes, of course...
I was just making an amendment. I was just making an amendment.
Okay. All right. Mr. Clerk, are we ready for a vote?
Yes, we are.
So, we're voting on the motion as proposed by Commissioner Jackson.
Which is to amend that language, strike the language up.
To amend that language and Article 1, Rule 2, letter I.
On the seating array?
Yeah, on the seating...
And just for clarification, was that a motion to amend and advance?
No, just amend.
Just amend.
Okay, we're just amending. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. All right. Everybody. So, we're just amending now, we're not advancing.
And that... Motion carries with aid and support, none in opposition.
Commissioner Epperson, are you still on... Did you still have a desire to be on the board?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like you to make a motion to remove... Under Article 5, Rule 1, remove Rule 1 in its entirety, if I get a second.
Second.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Epperson, a second by... Couldn't hear who that was. Who was that second?
Jackson.
Jackson?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Epperson. Can you please enlighten us on your...
I don't think... I think this is a... This is a parliamentary maneuver that we can use. And if Congress, they don't send nobody out to compel them to come... State reps, they don't send nobody to compel them to come to a meeting. I think the same should apply to us. I think it's a strategy. We've utilized it in the past, and it has really broken where we have came to a compromise. And I don't think we're at the point now, we're talking about the sheriff said that they don't... And the law enforcement, they don't wanna enforce the mask mandate. They don't wanna enforce vaccinations and all this stuff. So, why we want them to come out running behind us? And our citizens elected us to handle our business the way that we should. So, I think that should be removed in its entirety because it's a strategy. It's a strategy that has led to compromise, and we have been hopelessly greed locked in the past.
Just... I don't... Forgive me, Commissioner Epperson. I don't have the amendment open. This is the issue regarding sending the...
Right. If you don't get a quorum, if you call the sheriff out to go round up the commission like we some two-bit criminals or something.
All right. So, we have Commissioner Epperson's motion to remove section... What's that section again, Commissioner?
Article 5, Rule 1, in its entirety.
Article 5, Rule 1, in its entirety. We had a motion and a second. Commissioner Jackson, you're on the board?
Yes. I was gonna say that I had a concern about that part as well. We discussed it. We had discussed that in Webster Parish. I think that was an issue where some members were protesting their council meeting, and I believe it went to trial, and those council members were upheld in their right to protest. And then I see where it says that... It says that the sheriff would impose a fine. I don't know that it would be the sheriff that could impose a fine. I don't know of any laws. I thought judges impose fines. I guess that's a question for legal. Does the sheriff have... Does the sheriff have the authority to impose fines?
Commissioner, I'll have to look it up because it references... References. References to specific Louisiana statute.
So, yeah, I would be supporting that. I'll be supporting it. As Commissioner Epperson says, folks have a right to leave, or you never know what the person's reasons for leaving. It may be a substantiated reason for leaving, so I don't see the necessity to have it in there. So, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Chavez?
Thank you, Chairman. Attorney Frazier, on this... On this specific situation, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Epperson, we're gonna come to work or we're not. So, I'm fine with voting for it. However, can you pull some regs and just send to the commission for our educational purpose on, I guess, what happens if commissioners don't come to work? What happens if we can't achieve a quorum? How long can we go with not having a meeting legally? And what takes place? So, and you don't have to answer that, just so that... So that we know, God forbid it happens in the future, but if a snare like that, so that we know how to self-regulate ourselves.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. So, we have... Seeing no one else on the board, we have...
Just... I got a call out here, just a... This doesn't seem to have a title on it either. It just says RS. It doesn't have which title. You see what I'm talking about? It just says RS 1227. It doesn't have which title of statute.
Okay.
So, just, you know, may want to actually do a research to kinda see where is it? What title is it under in the statute?
Okay. So, we have the... The motion to forward the personal policies and procedures resolution as written, with the exception of the desire to remove the issue around the seating chart and the issue to remove the law enforcement's ability to force a quorum. So, that's the motion on the table with those modifications. Can we have a vote? Mr. Clerk?
We are ready.
Commissioner Chavez?
All right.[1596.91] All right, and that motion carries with eight in support, none in opposition, and four absent. That brings us to the next item on your agenda, which is to authorize a discussion regarding the ITIP application. And if I could mention, this is another one of those items that may have found itself on a Economic Development Committee agenda, had things been flowing normally in that, on that committee. And, but after some discussion with, with President Johnson, he does intend to call an Economic Development Committee meeting, therefore it may be appropriate to refer this to that committee.
I'll make the motion that we refer this, this matter to the Economic Development Committee for further consideration. So, we had a motion and a second, any discussion on that? Attorney Frazier, you're on the board, is that a different matter?
It's a different matter, yes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, could we please have a vote on forwarding the ITIP issue to the Economic Development Committee?
Absolutely.
With me, forwarding ITIP to Economic Development. Well, Commissioner Johnson's gonna put something together.
All right, and that motion carries with seven in support, none in opposition, and five absent. That brings us all the way to the end of new business, to communique and committee reports.
Before we get to that, I had a question on the, the bylaws amendment, was that a motion to amend and advance as amended? Because I know initially, nobody said that they wanted to advance it.
The first, the first one was a motion to just amend, Commissioner Jackson's motion. The second motion that was voted on was to amend and advance.
Thank you.
So, that, that includes both, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. I mean, it's almost understandable, unless we both remove something that, whatever we do today, advance formal action on Thursdays.
Well, they were specifically asked and specifically said no, so that's why I wanted to follow up.
Okay.
And no, I appreciate you doing that, and I will say that, just for the record, when we go back and watch it, I did note it was, it was stated and then restated by the chairman, so.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we're at commission remarks, are we not?
We are.
Okay, remarks from the commission, please get on the board. Commissioner Epperson, you're up. Or is that a previous, that's previous. Commissioner Burrell?
Okay, Chairman, I just want to check on the coyote situation over there off of Lake Shore, see if they got any more of a report on how that situation is coming along.
You're asking how it's coming along?
Yes.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Commissioner Burrell, there has been no more sightings, no more traps set since then, since the first one. So, initially, I guess they're thinking that the one lone coyote, if it was, or if it was a pack, that that actually scared the rest of them off, so they're still monitoring the situation, but currently, there hasn't been no more sightings.
Well, good, I haven't heard any complaints from that area, so something is happening.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for communique or committee reports? One more chance. All right, we got a quiet group tonight today.
If there are no more comments, we do have a brief clerk's note on your agenda at this point, just to remind everybody that we will have a public hearing for the budget ordinances during your regular session meeting on Thursday, so that has already been advertised, and we just wanted to remind you about it. That brings us to the administrator.
One minute, Mr. Clerk, I think we've got one, one light thought from Commissioner Burrell.
Yeah, I had to get my article back, I didn't have it. There was an interesting article in The Times dealing with capping orphaned wells, and Caddo Parish has more of them than any other place in the state. So, what he will, I'll begin with you through the Natural Resource Committee, to, you know, to see whether or not we've charted these wells.
Yes, sir.
Understand that there's a lot of them out there, that we don't even know what they are, they are contributing to the global warming situation, and also there, there's money in the infrastructure fund to try to close some of these wells.
Okay.
So, that's something that we'll be looking forward to, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. All right, let's see, Mr., or Dr. Wilson, you have an administrative report for us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, commissioners, just a brief update on a few of the things we're tracking for you all. The, the U.S. Treasury Emergency Rental Assistance Program is going along just fine. We currently, we're getting about thirty applications a day, and there's no delay in processing any one, so that's about a week's turnaround, as long as they, all the paperwork is completed accurately. We are doing well on that, and we do anticipate getting some additional funds beyond what we have ourselves, because we will, we'll be running out of money maybe sometime in, next month.
Reckon it.
So, unless we get another infusion of money, we'll have to determine a cutoff date to receiving additional applications. The next item, we have twenty-one children in our detention center, four belong to OJJ. We have four of the, the twenty-one seventeen year olds, and we have eleven seventeen-year-olds at CCC. Also, a demographer has been selected, Mr. Cedric Floyd, and his contract should be signed by the end of this week, and he'll be working with you all on, on the redistricting of your districts based on census data. Also, the no infections contacts with COVID-19 virus to any of the staff members, our buildings, we don't have any being reported, and your financial report for October should be at your stations. And that concludes my report today.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. He's already made reference to the October financials being on our, at our stations, the president has no report to make, since I just had a quick battlefield promotion, one was not prepared. We do have a citizen's comment, I don't know that Mr., is it, is it Larry D. Henderson, is he here? He is here, so one, one late citizen's comment.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, you have more patience than most, Mr. Henderson.
I wasn't planning on coming to the meeting today, I was down here doing something else. But anyway, I stepped in, I learned a lot that affects our lives, you guys. I take my hat off to you all, it's a hard job. My concern is corner lot fencing. The ZBA has laws, or wherever those laws are found, on the corner lot is three feet, the height, if it's facing the road. And the ZBA pick and choose who they want to go higher than that, and I think it should be fair, it should be everybody, just like the council, the parish commission said, everybody, all the dogs, it should be picking and choosing, I think it should be the same. I have a corner lot, and my six-foot fence would have to be at my house. I'm gonna have more yard outside of the fence than I'm gonna have on inside, and I'm having grandchildren now. I want my grandchildren to be able to run across the yard, play with a ball, ride a bicycle, anything they want, without that obstruction. Came to the ZBA, they told me no. The fella that went before me on the corner lot, they told me he could raise his fist up to six feet, they told me no. I asked him for the same privileges, the same reason that he was getting, to allow me to have it. They told him yes, and they told me no. It didn't make sense to me. He said people looking in this can see through his window, they can see through my window. The board told me I was further away from the road. If you, if you're fifty yards from the street, you can still see my house. I, I deserve that privacy, just as someone that's, houses twenty feet from the road. It doesn't matter. I don't think the board should have the authority, so therefore, the rules would have to be changed, I think, to pick and choose who could have and who can't. There are other homes in Shreveport that have, some would have asked for, maybe some have all of what I asked for, they just told me I couldn't have it. And I, and now, in December when I did it, the price of lumber has skyrocketed. I'm retired from the city. I can't, I mean, I'm gonna have to afford it, but it's, it's a cost to me. And I feel like they snub their nose, so I did the research, I showed them what they had approved it, they didn't look at anything that I presented, they didn't consider it, they looked at it. And, and I just feel that I was treated unfair, so.
Mr. Henderson, thank you for expressing your concerns. Ms. Frazier, there is an appeals process for.
That's correct.
There is an appeals process for disgruntled citizens?
Yes.
Let me encourage you to meet with.
Yes, I have to go to court.
Ms. Frazier, after.
I'm familiar with, I have to go to court, is that right?
No, it, you can appeal to the, are you in the city limits or in the parish?
Yes, I do.
Well, then you can appeal to the city council.
Oh. That's what they told me, had to go directly to the district court.
Oh, yeah, I don't have that.
And it's costing me money, I'm retired. I'm not a lawyer, I mean, it, it makes no sense. And during that meeting, they referred me back to the standards of the board, and the board, not the standards of the city, the ZBA, the board's rules and regulations, and whoever was sitting over here, it may have been you, I'm not sure, said they could only go with the code, they have to go by the code. And the only people that can override the code is the board, and if the board picked this person to have what he wants, and this person not, it's just not fair as a citizen to pick and choose.
Well, thank you for expressing your concerns, I'm sorry we can't do anything to help you today, but.
I just want the rules to be changed.
Well, that's the city rule, we're the parish commission.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not a parish thing? Oh, okay, I'm in the wrong place.
No, no problem, take it up with your city councilman.
This is not what I do, all right, I apologize.
We're here to listen, Mr. Henderson. All right, Commissioner Chavez?
I was just, Chairman, wondering who is his city councilman? You got the comment card in front of you?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner, it's, he lives on Gooseberry Hill.
Is it seven-eleven-eighteen?
I think that's gonna be Commissioner.
It doesn't say.
Your shop, dude.
I'll give you a hand.
The city council seat that's currently back.
All right, we'll, we'll work on it. All right.
Okay, all right, who else we got? Let's see, Commissioner Epperson?
That's what I wanted to have, I thought he gave it to the city.
Okay, all right, Commissioner Clerk, what else we have?
That brings us to citizens' comments, later arrivals as they're completed, so consent agenda is our next item.
We have a motion.
After that adjournment.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here today, we appreciate it, we are adjourned.